Good evening, everybody. I called to order the Iowa City City Council meeting for March 24, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And roll call, please.
Fergus.
Here.
Mims. Mims.
Here.
Salee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Well, good evening, everyone. We are definitely in a new space and where the councilors are at their homes or very different tonight. And for the public that is joining, we want to welcome you. And this is kind of the new way of the world across the globe. And so we're very cognizant of the challenge it may be for some to join us by Zoom. And we're going to be as careful as we navigate tonight to make sure that if you're on and you want to speak, we want to make sure that you have that opportunity. I will ask people to navigate a little bit at the bottom of their screen. And you'll see a comment section. So if you are on from the public and you would like to make it to speak tonight, if you can just write your first and last name, we have staff that's going to record your name and alert me when you are present, when it's time for your item. If you can also list that either your item number or the name of the item that you want to talk about. And then I will be sure that we include you on that item. For those that don't figure out how to submit their name at the bottom, I'll always take a moment at the end of those names that I've called from the public just to allow people to chime in. If you're on the phone, understand that you won't have the opportunity to type and state that you want to join us. So we're going to go a little slower when it comes down to the public comment. But I want you to know that we are certainly going to navigate this as best as we can tonight. Item number two is proclamations. And this, whereas in 2009, Rachel Crandall, head of transgender Michigan, founded International Transgender Day of Visibility to Compliment Transgender Day of Remembrance. And whereas while transgender day of remembrance memorializes those we have lost, transgender day of visibility celebrates the living, educates the public, and reduces transphobia. And whereas this day is dedicated to celebrating the accomplishments and victories of transgender and gender expansive people, while raising awareness of the ongoing discrimination, harassment, and violence they still suffer. And whereas we recognize over 1 million Americans are transgender and have bravely overcome significant hardships to live their authentic selves. And whereas we come together as a community to advance the cause of transgender equality. And we acknowledge that far too many transgender people, especially those of color, continue to face profound threats to their safety and well-being. And whereas we value our transgender and gender expansive residents and visitors and their contributions to this community. And whereas as efforts to limit the rights of transgender and gender expansive people continue, we pledge as a community to support and uplift them. Now therefore, I, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2020, Transgender Day of Visibility in Iowa City and affirm this community's commitment to equity and full inclusion of our transgender and gender expansive community members and guests. And I understand that we have, this proclamation will be accepted by the Human Rights Commissioner Kathy McGinnis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor T. Thank you to the city council members. I appreciate you recognizing this important day. As you said, the International Transgender Day of Visibility is important to celebrate and recognize the living members of the transgender community around the world. And I appreciate that we can recognize this day as a way to raise awareness around the discrimination that transgender people still face, while also appreciating the courage it takes to live openly and authentically. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Moving on to item three through eight. Selective motion to approve consent calendar as amended, removing item 5A2 and 6E from the agenda as requested.
Second.
And I may have you consider move by so that I could, because it's a little challenging. So move by.
Pauline.
Taylor.
Seconded by Susan.
All right, move by Taylor, seconded by Mims. Discussion. So I do know that item 6I, I would like to call Kent Ralston. And I also know that there's one individual that has submitted their name to speak in public, which would be Rachel Carlson. And if there's anyone else that would like to speak in public, please, if you can find that way to chat and submit your name if you would like to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda. Item number 6I, for just the knowledge of the public, is the Jefferson Street Glendale Road Traffic Calming. So Kent Ralston, if you can present to staff right now as requested.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So as the mayor mentioned, the resolution before you this evening authorizes the installation of speed humps on Jefferson Street and Glendale Road between Clap Street and Seventh Avenue. As residents of, the residents of that corridor have successfully completed the City of Iowa City's traffic calming process as the 85th percentile speeds along that corridor were roughly between 30 and 40, 35 and 40 mile per hour, excuse me, as is shown in your package, with a posted speed limit of 25 mile per hour, which is quite a bit faster than what we would like to see. Staff discussed traffic calming options with those residents of the corridor at a public meeting on November 12. And the consensus to residents who attended the meeting was to move forward with request for traffic calming, which we're discussing tonight. On January 3rd, a survey was then mailed to residents of the corridor in order to measure support for that proposal. And in all, staff received responses from 69% of the households along the corridor, 72% indicating support for the proposal. I did want to mention just a few things that make this a little bit unique. Staff first tried to seek out some alternative options to speed humps in the corridor. As we know, the larger public sometimes is not in favor of speed humps, as well as several council members, just because they don't really provide an aesthetic amenity to a corridor, just a matter of slowing down speed. In this quarter, we did look at the use of median islands and traffic circles and actually discussed that at a public meeting last summer. However, once we got a little bit further along with preliminary design, the city engineer and his staff concluded that we just weren't going to be able to fit those traffic circles into the corridor the way we would have liked to. The second thing I'd note that's a little bit unique is the speed humps being proposed tonight are slightly different than the other speed humps in and around town. They're exactly the same, although these speed humps would actually have a break or a separation in them to allow emergency vehicles and transit buses and other large vehicles to pass through the corridor and essentially straddle those speed humps. In some of the preliminary traffic calming committee discussions that we had, the fire chief had noted some concern about response times in the neighborhood to the east of Seventh Avenue. And after doing some research and providing that to him, he concluded that these modified speed humps were satisfactory. Just in a nutshell, by way of background, the traffic calming process is really a five-step process. The first being that staff needs to receive a petition, which we did. The second step is a study and evaluation, which we also did and concluded the speeds were much faster than we would like to see, as I mentioned previously. We then held a neighborhood meeting that I also had mentioned earlier and had some pretty good attendance at that meeting. And then we conducted that neighborhood survey, which I had mentioned. That survey, the adopted traffic calming program requires a 50% response rate to the mail-out survey with a 60% approval rate. And I had mentioned, we exceeded both of those with this corridor. And then the fifth and final step is really just approval by this body. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Kent, one of the, this is John. One of the questions that we saw in the correspondence had to do with how this could impact bicyclists along this corridor. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, you know, that's a little bit of a matter of opinion. Although I would say that we have speed humps, you know, in more, in well over a dozen locations around town now. We really don't fear that it affects bicyclists in any really detrimental way. The way the speed humps are constructed, they actually stretch across the street, the width of the street. But they do stop short about two or three feet from the curb line on either side to allow for drainage. So if a bicyclist didn't want to ride over the speed hump, they could actually head towards the curb line and pass around it. In this case, there'll be a gap in the middle, as I mentioned, because these will sort of be a modified speed hump. And then the last thing I guess I would say is that the speed humps are much longer than most people actually, I guess, think they would be. They're actually 12 feet in length as the way the car travels. And really, when riding over them, you know, on a personal level, I've not noticed it to be really detrimental. So these aren't speed bumps like you would see in a parking lot of a large retail store. These are actually speed humps, so they're constructed a little bit differently. And it shouldn't really be a problem.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Kent from the councilors? We have someone from our community, Rachel Carson will go first, and then followed by Teresa. Dr. Gary will be followed, will follow Rachel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the time. I just wanted to follow up with what Kent said. As neighbors, we followed this process for several years to get this to happen. We, it's a very, very, very dangerous stretch of road. We all call the police all the time trying to get solutions. And this is the solution that we've come to now after a couple of years of trying to figure something out. And I will say to Councilman Thomas's question about bicycling, it's currently not safe to bicycle because people are speeding so quickly through there. I wouldn't let my child bicycle on this street as it is right now. So we, I am very, very, very strongly support traffic calming measures on our street. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa.
It's already been said by Rachel and especially, and even though there aren't a lot of of our neighbors present, I know that we have a lot of people who are also in support of this. It's very dangerous. I know that the average is 35, 40 miles an hour of people going over the speed limit. But I've seen it much higher and I don't feel safe. And there, not only are there bicyclists, but a lot of people use this road to walk to work down at the, well, they used to, to walk to campus and also a lot of dog walkers. So yeah, please, please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to talk about item 6I? Or any item on the consent agenda? Council discussion.
This is Susan. I would just say, and I mentioned this in the work session, that we have a pretty good process in place for our traffic calming. It's something that we have worked on and revised at least a couple of times. And I feel really strongly that if the neighborhoods have gone through this process and meet the criteria, that we need to follow that process. And it's certainly from, you know, I know with Kent's process and his presentation that that is exactly what's happened. And so while I understand there are people who may not agree with that, we do have a process in place and I feel that we should follow that. So I will be supporting this.
I will be supporting it as well. You know, I've mentioned in previous councils that I'm always looking for another solution to the problem of speeding than speed humps. But as Kent said, they looked at some options and they just didn't seem to work on this particular corridor. So I will be supporting the speed humps. I was, in looking at the traffic data here, I was, and I drive this corridor fairly frequently. I was really surprised to see what the speeds were. In some cases, between Parsons and Seventh, for example, 15% of the vehicles are traveling at or above over 42 miles an hour. So that's not just a safety issue, in my view. That's, that affects anyone experiencing that corridor, whether they're walking, bicycling, perhaps just out in front talking with their neighbors. So it's both safety and quality of life that is impacted by this. I wish it weren't so. I wish people would simply drive more respectfully of the places they drive through. But this is, this is where we are, and so I will be supporting it.
This is, this is Pauline. I was one that asked to have discussion on this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm glad to have gotten, been able to have this time and especially the presentation from Kent and hearing from Rachel and Teresa, and especially from Rachel saying that it's not safe for bicyclists now. And it certainly wouldn't be if the cars are going 35 to 42 miles an hour. That's, that's not safe. So I would think that hopefully, most of our correspondents were from the bicyclists. I would hope that this will help to get them to understand that this, make it even safer for them. So I'm in favor of it now.
This is Janice. There is, I'm glad to hear that there is a process that they've been able to accommodate emergency vehicles. It's definitely a safety issue and it sounds to me as if it's been through a really exhaustive process. So I will also be supporting.
Well, I'm not voting for it, right? It is on the consent agenda still. I'm still supporting it, right?
Yes. You have no more comments, then roll call, please.
Fergus. Yes. Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Selective motion to accept correspondence for item 5A2, item 6A, item 6E, and item 6I.
Moved by Mims. Seconded by Weiner.
All right, and we're going to do a roll call on this item. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
All right, we got through our first vote successfully. Item number 10, lease agreement with Mid American Energy Company for a solar energy system at Waterworks Prairie Park. Resolution approving the lease of land at the Waterworks Prairie Park to Mid American Energy Company for a large-scale solar energy system. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to have Jeff Frun, our staff here at the city, our city manager, kind of give some, some comments on this item. And then I'll follow that by Mid American Energy at OPT. And then I do have people from the community that have submitted their names that wanted to talk about this item, which is Stephen Locher, Jerry Wett-Laffer, and Regina Bailey. If there's anyone else in the community that wants to talk on this item, please add your name to the comment section and then I will call your name. If you're on the phone or wasn't able to submit your name in the comment section, I will at the end come and allow time for people to chime in. At this time, we're going to get Jeff Frun, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a lease agreement with Mid American Energy Company. This has been something that we've been working on for the last probably nine months to a year or so. It is the lease of just shy of 19 acres of land at Waterworks Prairie Park to Mid American Energy for the purpose of establishing a large-scale solar energy system. As I mentioned, it is a 30-year lease, but there is an additional 10-year option that Mid American can exercise. The annual rent payment is going to start at $13,440. It has a 3% annual escalator. The good folks at Mid American Energy are here and they'll tell you a little bit more about the project itself. But we did note in the staff report that these estimated to generate three megawatts of energy, which is roughly the equivalent of 580 average single-family homes in the state of Iowa. This project was identified in the accelerated, the 100-day reports of accelerated actions for our climate plan. And our climate plan did call for staff to pursue partnerships with key stakeholders, including our energy companies. The Mid American staff that will present next will tell you a little bit about why this property was selected. I want to focus in on some of the correspondence that we've received questioning the placement of the solar panels over the established prairie at the park. Those concerns are certainly legitimate. Those are questions that were raised by both the city and Mid American early on on this project. The lease agreement, if approved tonight or in the future, does require Mid American to have a vegetation plan approved by the city before work can start. We do not view a successful solar project in a quality prairie area as two mutually exclusive goals. Matter of fact, we think that they can coexist and be a model that can be shown across the state and the country, and we're committed to that ideal. You'll hear a little bit more of that from Mid American when they, when they present. The vegetation plan is currently being worked on. That is being led by Mid American Energy. But they have brought on a couple of consultants to help them. One is very familiar with the city, Applied Ecological Services. They were our consultants for our master plan for our natural areas. And if you noticed on the consent agenda, the prairie project that you approved at Hickory Hill Park was also designed and reviewed by Applied Ecological Services. So they're very familiar with our situation here in Iowa City and have a lot to contribute to the vegetation plan for this project. Mid American Energy has also been in contact and seeking the assistance of the Centers of Pollinators and Energy, which has a lot of experience in trying to marry renewable energy fields and quality prairie plantings that contribute to the habitat. So again, I want to recognize that those, those concerns are certainly valid. And should the council decide to move forward, staff, both at the city and Mid American Energy, are committed to trying to create the best marriage between the natural area and the solar array. I do want to point out just a couple other small pieces to this project. There will be a little bit of tree removal. Some of the trees that are currently in the Department of Transportation right-of-way would need to be removed in order to prevent them from shading the first several rows of the solar panels. Mid American has committed to a tree replacement fee that'll total between $25,000 and $30,000 for all the tree removals associated with this project. The city would use those funds for additional tree plantings in the community. The location along I-80 does give this project significant visibility, which was one reason it was selected or identified by both the city and Mid American. It will be a, not only a meaningful project, but also one to showcase our commitment to climate action. As part of this lease agreement, Mid American would also create a wayside at, right off the trail, next to where the solar panels would be constructed. And they would pay for the construction of a small shelter facility, as well as educational signage that would highlight both Mid American Energy's commitment to renewable energy and the city's climate action plan. Be happy to take any questions, or if you prefer, Mayor, we can allow the Mid American Energy representatives to share a little bit about the project, too.
Does, does any councilors have questions for Jeff?
No.
We can always swing back around. All right, we'll go ahead and have Matt Ott from Mid American Energy.
All right, so Matt Ott is going to present. And then back to Adam Jablonski. I'm the Director for Renewable Energy Development for, for Mid American. So thank you for your time to the Mayor and Council and a very good introduction by Jeff. Thank you for that. Just kind of running through the slides, hopefully you can see those up on your screen. Some of this will be a little bit of a repeat with what Jeff said. But this is kind of jumping down the last bullet, but this is Mid American's first solar project. So we're excited to be able to partner with the city and showcase renewable energy and our commitment to environmental respect, both that the city and Mid American have. It's a three-megawatt project. It's made up of over 10,000 solar panels. And it will produce enough electricity to power approximately 580 average Iowa homes. And I'll touch on this a little bit later, but we are interconnecting into the distribution system, which is just across the interstate from this, which will be able to serve, you know, local load Iowa City residents as opposed to a project interconnecting into the transmission system where that energy would travel farther. Annual lease payments under this lease start out at $13,440, escalate at 3%, but also with that, there is a property tax payments currently estimated about $3,000 annually that'll, that'll come into the city. So this, along with our investment in other renewables such as wind projects, is part of our plan to provide 100% renewable energy to our customers through our Green Advantage program. And that is a program that is certified by the Iowa Utilities Board. Next slide, Matt. So just why we chose this location. You know, first, when it comes to solar, you need a wide-open, relatively flat area to support a solar project. And there are only, you know, so many of those unapproved areas available within the city, on city property, where we're able to, you know, accommodate this partnership with the city. So this one was identified as a good location because it's flat. Proximity to the interstate, like Jeff said, will be a good showcase for both the city and Mid American. And again, it's proximity to the local electrical distribution system. That's just right across the interstate, which is where we're going to interconnect into and be able to serve the residents of Iowa City with this renewable energy. Again, it's highly visible to the public. It'll help raise awareness of the project, renewable energy and the associated environmental benefits. We'll also, like the lease requires, be installing that rest and educational area in the park and then turn that over to the city. So we'll, we'll be responsible for those costs, the installation, and then we'll give that to the, to the city. We're also able to, on an area like this, use single-access tracking. So this will, this allows the solar project to track the sun from east to west. And it has a better production as compared to a fixed tilt system that you put on, you know, hard surfaces or surfaces you can't penetrate. Next slide. All right, so yeah, one thing we identified early that we knew we needed to address in talks with the city was basically restoring the prairie. was basically restoring the prairie. So, you know, this isn't, hopefully there wasn't any confusion, but you know, we're not, you know, clearing and graveling or paving or anything like that, that this area. It will be temporarily disturbed, but once a project is construction, constructed, it'll be reseeded with a pollinator-friendly prairie seed mix. And preliminary estimates only have about less than one acre, you know, being taken out of that prairie due to, you know, the access road down the east side and then where the pilings are pounded into the ground to support the solar system. You know, as Jeff mentioned, we're working with Applied Ecological Services, which the city has used in the past and I believe is comfortable with. And also the Center for Pollinators and Energy, they are a well-regarded entity. They go to a lot of renewable energy conferences and present on, you know, how prairie can coexist with, with solar. So we will work on that vegetation and seeding mix plan with, with a consultant like Ecological Services. And again, that has to be presented to the city and the city must, must approve that plan. Mentioned before, but the educational rest area, we'll probably touch on, you know, how solar works, the city's climate action goals, and also, you know, we'll probably touch on maybe some prairie and how we've been able to incorporate prairie with the solar project and make sure they, they coexist there. So that is the end of the quick presentation, but we've got a few people here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adam. Does counsel have any questions for Adam from Mid-American Energy?
I have one question. This is John. On the, on the solar field here, will this, I'm assuming it's going to be secured with fencing?
Yep, that's correct. And we've been in discussions with the city already on what an acceptable fence would be, keeping aesthetics in mind and the ability for small wildlife to still move through. I think we've landed on an agricultural knot fencing that's got the bigger squares in it. So it's less industrial-looking. It'll be wooden fence posts and we think will fit in, you know, well within the area while, you know, keeping people safe and out of the solar facility as well.
And how tall will it be? Do you have that nailed down?
Right now, it's about seven feet. So it'll be about six foot of that agricultural knot and about, you know, one foot of three strands of barbed wire. So about seven feet.
Is, is the barbed wire required in your mind?
Yes, we think it is because, for security purposes, it is a, still an electric generating facility. You know, it's got electrical equipment in there and moving parts. It moves slow, but it still moves. So for, for safety purposes, we, we do think it's required to, you know, basically keep people out, keep people safe.
And, you know, one, one last question. I'm trying to get a sense from the drawing as to where this fence would be, but it looks like it would be fairly close to the existing trail. Is that right?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll run, you know, parallel with the trail. I don't know, Matt, do we know exactly what the distance is? I, I think it was somewhere between five and 10 feet off of the trail.
At a minimum, I believe it's 10 feet is what the city had asked us to get to stay away.
Minimum 10.
Okay, thanks.
And just kind of add to the, to that a little bit, you know, our, our timeline, you know, we're working with the developer right now. This is the last piece of development, the key piece of development we need to complete to be able to, you know, give that contractor the, the go-ahead to, to start construction so they can finish up their final designs, order materials. And then right now, it looks like construction would start about, probably early July timeframe is, is where the current schedule sits. So, you know, right now, with finishing this lease up here shortly, hopefully, with, with city approval, we'll be able to stay on track and, and get this project online by the end of the year.
Any other questions for Matt or Adam from Mid-American Energy or for Jeff from the counselors?
This is Janice Weiner. Were there any other tracts of land under consideration when you, you described why you believe this one is, is a really good location for this? But were there any other tracts of land that you considered that may have been a mix of land that would not affect the prairie?
The only other, I mean, this, this goes back, I think, a year to initial discussions with, with the city. But, you know, to, to accommodate that partnership, you know, it had to be on city-owned property. If my memory serves me correctly, it was this one or the airport. And at that time, you know, we didn't have a lot of experience with solar projects and FAA approval to put it at, at an airport. So we did not think that was possible to navigate that in a short period of time to put this project online in 2020. So, you know, it, it came back to, you know, this, this was the best fit, we thought.
All right, seeing there are no more questions. I just wanted to remind the individuals that want to speak on this topic from the public. In a second, I'm going to be calling you one by one. For anyone that has not, that do want to speak on this topic, if you can write your name and submit it through the comments at the end, I will also take a moment to see if there's anyone that would like to speak on this topic that didn't write their name or they're on the phone. The other thing I wanted to just say prior to the public coming is that during our work session, there was discussion by counsel on this topic where I believe there could be a motion to continue the public hearing and defer the resolution until April 7. So just know that that may be coming, where we will not close the public hearing and there potentially could be a deferral. I'm going to call up the names of individuals that want to speak. I will ask that you have five minutes to speak. And the first person that I have is Stephen Loker, if you're on the phone. Or, or present. I, we don't see you present yet. I'm going to go to the next person, Jerry Wett-Laffer.
It's Whit Laffer. And I want to speak chiefly on behalf of...
We can barely hear you. Oh, there.
Let me see if I can hear that. I have a deep personal commitment to the development of alternative energy. And yet I agree with the Sierra Club and others who have raised environmental and ecological concerns about the costs associated with this project. But I'm here to speak for the many people who love and use the Waterworks Prairie Park many of us year-round. It's a park that's heavily used and greatly loved as a park. It may not be covered with sod and weed killer and soccer fields, but it is nonetheless what the city has always claimed it to be, namely, a prairie park filled with native prairie plants that support all manner of, of life and all manner of public use. To suggest, as has been suggested, that this land is undeveloped or undevelopable is respectfully, I think, to show disrespect for Iowa's native ecosystem and ecosystem that has all but entirely disappeared. And I think it further shows disrespect to those who originally dedicated this land as a prairie park and to all of, all of us who use it and love it as such. I was hoping primarily to speak in favor of deferring action until there was a better opportunity for the public to be heard. I, I don't think it's, that the argument in that favor, in favor of that is, is very complicated. The, I can't imagine that this would qualify as a public, as the public hearing that was promised, given that so far as I've been able to determine, there has not been a single word either in the press citizen or on the city's website concerning this proposal, apart from the agenda for this meeting, concerning this proposal or announcing a public hearing. Those who know about it, know about it only by virtue of word of mouth. Further, clearly, the council and, and the citizens have far more important matters that they, that have to be, that are demanding their attention now and that require action by the council. And this technology is, for all of its virtue and as seamlessly as so far it has worked, it has, it is new and deeply unfamiliar and challenging to most of us and stands as a considerable impediment to public participation. As to the use of the park, it's used for, the trails are heavily used by walkers of all ages and characteristics, by brisk walkers, by older walkers, by disabled walkers, who are... It is paved and leveled by people, walking dogs on leashes. And it is used by some of both our oldest and our youngest bike riders for whom the flat terrain and the absence of traffic in the prairie setting hold great appeal. The, I know it because when my wife was suffering from cancer, beginning in, that we began in, in 2003 to walk in this park virtually every day year-round until she passed. And it was of enormous value to us, and I know that other people value it similarly. The, are there other questions to be raised? Sure. I still struggle to understand what the proposal is. I have a map of sorts that I have found after a good deal of digging. It certainly shows no fence. It certainly shows no rest area or educational facility designed to promote the contributions of Mid-American Energy. And, and I'm deeply, and I think others are deeply interested in, in what the details would look like. The map that I've seen suggests that there would be no trees removed. And yet now I hear for the first time that a significant number of trees would have to be removed. And, and there has even been a suggestion that this would not interfere with park users who want to use the trails. And, and I just have to say that by that standard, the entire parkland could be paved. If, if the, if the trails were left intact, we would be able to say that the trail, that nothing has interfered with the trails. And, and I think that this is a huge and costly intervention. It is not a matter of the park and the energy company coexisting. It is a classic win-lose situation in which land is being taken from the park and turned over to the energy company at what I believe to be an extremely favorable rate, so favorable that while the committee, while the company concedes that the better way to meet its objective of 100% fuel efficient is by wind rather than by solar, given the subsidy that we're providing here, solar becomes appealing to them. And I think that we need to take more time. I think we, I think consideration needs to be given to the people who use it. Twice in, in the last week and a half, I have driven past that parking lot and, and seen more than 25 cars in the lot. And those were not people going to a church picnic. Those were individual cars, individual families out walking and biking and using the park. And, and I sincerely hope that, that decision, that decision will be deferred until we can have a proper hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for, Jerry, for chiming in. Regina Bailey, Mayor, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Great.
Before I start, I want to thank all of you for your leadership in this difficult time. Natural disasters are tough enough, but a natural disaster without a playbook, really tough. So thank you for your service. I, like so many others, am very concerned about this juxtaposition of an intensive industrial use that, that takes up about 10% of the parkland, as far as I can understand. And it, it just doesn't seem, it seems incongruous with the use of a park. A park is not just where you place your foot. A park is also the view shed. We seek our natural areas. In an urban space, we, we go to our natural areas so we can be around nature. This, I haven't heard anything about how, how it's intended to mitigate the impact on that view shed. In fact, visibility seems to be a prime, primary criterion for this location. And so I'm just, I just have a lot of concerns. This is a park. And in this town, we really have a community value of separating and buffering our intensive industrial uses from our less intensive land uses. A park is a less intense land use. I mean, we should embrace that. And we value those parks and green spaces in this community. And so to put this in the middle of a prairie, even if the prairie is restored, there's still a huge impact. The fact that we would have a fence with barbed wire in a public park, the fence that, the fact that, you know, that we need to be buffered from electric generating activities, the public needs to be buffered from its own land, that's a little, it's an incongruous use. And so I would ask you to consider, I know how difficult it is to, to start rethinking things about nine months into a project. And you have resources, you have staff time. You've spent time developing this partnership with the Mid-American. I understand that this is far down the road in discussion in your minds. But as you heard from Jerry, many, many people from the public are just now wrapping their heads around this project and just hearing about it. And, and you've seen the concern from the public. So I commend you for consideration of deferring this item. I would also urge you to really take a look at alternative locations. The airport seems to be an ideal location. Having worked on their strategic plan, I think that it would be a nice partnership with them. I understand, yes, the challenge of working with the FFA. But I think that it would be worth exploring, given the value that all of us place on this park and the importance that our urban, open, public spaces have in the hearts and the minds of people in this, in this community. So please reconsider this location, as difficult as that might seem. As, as far as this project is, is in its development, please reconsider a location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this topic that hasn't signed up or maybe are on the phone? Hearing none. Because of the information that was shared amongst the counselors at the, at the work session, could I get a motion to continue the public hearing and defer the resolution until April 7, 2020?
This is Taylor.
Second by Ms.
Move by Taylor, second by Ms. All.
Yes, yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Te?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
And let me clarify, that is to continue it till April 7.
Correct. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
On that move.
Second, second by Ms.
Move by Saleh, second by Ms. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
All right. I did skip over item number nine, which is community comment. And so at this time, anyone that would like, from the community that would like to address council on any item that is not on the agenda, now is your time to do so. And because I don't have any names, so if you are on the phone line or on Zoom, please state your name and keep your comments between three to five minutes. Seeing there is no one, I'm going to move on to item number 11.
May I ask a question? Is it, may I ask where the public can find the actual details of this proposed plan?
We'll have staff reach out to you if we have your email address or phone number.
Okay. And I would hope it would be made available to the general public, but thank you very much. I appreciate your concern.
Thank you. Item 11, item number 11, 11,600,000 general obligation bonds. Resolution is instituted proceedings to take additional action for the, in, in, in suance of not to exceed 11,600,000 general bond obligation bonds. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I do know that direct, Finance Director Dennis Bachenstedt is on, is on here as well. If staff have questions for him, but do you have a presentation you would like to do on this?
Yes, I, I do have a brief presentation, Mayor. I can go ahead and, and set that up.
Great.
Hopefully everybody can see that. Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Dennis Bachenstedt, the Finance Director for the City of Iowa City. Tonight, there's a series of public hearings and resolutions in order to facilitate the issuance of the 2020 general obligation bonds. The timeline for the issuance of the general obligation, obligation bonds is presented here. Tonight, March 24th, there is a, two public hearings. Each one is followed by a, a resolution. And then there is a third resolution to authorize the property tax pre-levee. On April 14th, we will conduct our bond rating call with Moody's Investor Service. There'll be further council actions on April 21st. And then on May 5th, we will receive and open the bids that we would receive from investors and banks. And then on May 19th, we would have the resolution authorizing the actual issuance of the bonds. And then on June 1st, we would close on the sale of the bonds and receive the proceeds. Those projects being funded by the 2020 general obligation bonds. It's primarily a park and street improvements. The largest project is the American Legion Road reconstruction at $4.85 million. There's an additional $1.4 million for the First Avenue and Scott Boulevard intersection improvement. There's also additional funding in there for the asset management software and a fire truck replacement. The 2020 general obligation bonds were part of the 2020 amended budget and five-year capital improvement program. They were incorporated into the current and future property tax levy projections. These will be sold in a competitive bidding process. And as I said, there's a couple of public hearings and resolutions and then a third resolution. So it's actually items 11 through 13 on tonight's agenda that I'm presenting for right now. And then I will try to answer any questions you have.
Seeing there's no questions, public discussion, is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? I didn't see anyone on the sideline. I'm going to close the public hearing. Make it a motion to approve the resolution.
Move by Saleh.
Seconded by Thomas.
Move by Saleh, seconded by Thomas. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, 700,000 general obligation bonds. Resolution instituted proceedings to take additional action for the in suance of not to exceed 700,000 general obligation bonds. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I don't think you have a presentation on this, Dennis, but if anyone has questions for Dennis or you, you can certainly ask. He's available. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Move, Taylor.
Seconded by Burgess.
Move by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. Council discussion. Roll call, roll call, please.
Pete?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13, 2020 gold bond pre-levee authorization. Resolution authorizing the in suance of 12,145,000 general obligation bonds. Series 2020 levy and a tax for the payment thereof. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Move by Saleh.
Seconded by Thomas.
Move by Saleh, seconded by Thomas. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Saleh? Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, fiscal year 2020 budget amendment, public hearing. Resolution amended the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there questions for staff on this item? Would anyone from the public like to discuss this item? Hearing no one from the public, I'm going to, going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Oh, Weiner? Taylor, second.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, fiscal year 2021 budget, public hearing. This is a resolution adopted of the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I believe we have our Ashley that is going to talk on this item. Ashley Monroe.
Okay, thank you. Hello. I will share my screen. We have just a couple of slides to briefly walk you through this, walk you through our budget. Just a moment. Okay. So we had, this just shows a calendar of budget review and adoption. We began the budget process nearly a year ago in July and council had an initial discussion in August last year. We worked on these items and presented to council in early January of 2020. In February, on the 18th, we set the max property tax levy rate. So that was a new process this year required by state legislation changes. And, and then today, we're holding the public hearing for final adoption on the budget. It needs to be certified with the county auditor by the end of the month. So a couple of things to be very proud of as we've included in the budget, just high level strategic initiatives that we've included in this budget. We have $1 million general fund contributions towards our affordable housing efforts. And then council approved a significant increase to our A to agencies grant program. So both of those items are included here. We have investment, of course, in our road improvements program. We're continuing work on our bicycle master plan, our parks master plans and natural areas master plan. So we're moving along there and the, the budget also addresses some of our major facility planning needs. We've invested per council's direction in increases to hourly wages for city employees and also made conversions for some of our temporary employees into permanent status employees and also added some new positions with this budget. We've significantly invested in staff. And then finally, just another highlight is that the budget addresses significant climate action and adaptation efforts per our recent, our recent 100-day report. We have continued to reduce our tax levy rate. So we are bringing ourselves more in line with other Iowa cities. We're now in the mid-range of the top largest cities in Iowa. We're building stronger reserves for our future, so both emergency reserves and also facility reserves. We're avoiding spikes in our utility fees by making just small incremental changes to our, our fees. And I'll touch on both that and the property tax just now. So here we have a statement of the property tax, property tax rate trend and our tax levies. So as you can see, our property tax rate has decreased with a single line. The bars are showing tax valuation and the, the difference between those. In the chart on the right, we're just showing the tax levy totals. So we have our combined general fund tax levy, it's staying at $9.61. We're increasing the employee benefits levy by 10 cents. So it goes from $3.24 to $3.34. We're increasing, we're adding an emergency tax levy for the first time in, in a while. We have used that in the past and the city has, but this time will be 24 cents. And that's being dedicated specifically to climate action initiatives. And then finally, we're dropping the debt service levy by 40 cents. So from 297 to 257, with a final tax levy proposed of $15.77. It's a drop of six cents in the levy. And then the final thing I'll, I'll go through is that our fee changes proposed. There are no fee changes recommended for stormwater, sewer, parking or transit. We have 5% water rate increase that was previously approved in the, in the last year's budget. It was a two-year approval to fund system upgrades and maintenance. There's a 90 cent monthly refuse fee increase recommended for, based on the, the fluctuation and increase in use of our recycling programs. And then the last recommended fee changes in the budget are $2.50 landfill trash disposal tipping fee. So that would be applied when you go to the landfill. And a $3 increase for recycling large-scale TV monitors over 18 inches. So with that, I will wrap up and Jeff, Dennis, or I can answer any questions. Thank you.
I just have a question. When you say we increase the Affordable Housing Fund to 1 million and after that you're adding the, the A to agency grant, my understanding that's only for like housing to home fund? It, it seemed like for all the agency.
Yes.
So coming out from the 1 million?
No, um, excuse me. The $1 million was applied to the Affordable Housing Fund, right? Just like it has been in the past years. And then we have a separate pool of money that is in the general fund. That's 675,000 for A to agency support, that is separate from the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay, because you know, the million there.
Yes, they're two separate items.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
This is Janice. I, I'm, I'm really happy that one of the things that we built into the budget is, is our reserves. Because as we, as we look at this year now, we're faced with enormous uncertainty about some of our revenue with, with COVID-19, hotel motel taxes, transit, a variety of other things. So I just wanted to ask what, what flexibility is there for, for us going forward? And so, speaking as someone who is not tremendously still conversant with city budgets.
Dennis, may I?
Yeah, I can address that. And we do have a, a substantial general fund balance. And of course, that's helped to build contingencies and flexibility. You know, if we have revenue fluctuations or uncertainties, but then also several years ago, we built the emergency fund and part of that was on the backs of, you know, the state changes to what they were doing with property taxation. Also, it was coming following the, the flood of 2008, which the city faced a lot of financial stress at that time. And so we really developed that emergency fund to tackle those uncertainties and contingencies. And, and this is one that we feel if, if either a loss of revenue or excessive expenditures that we would fall back on to, to be able to reach into and, and help sustain operations to the extent we can. And, and right now that fund has about a $5 million balance in it, which hopefully would be enough to carry us through whatever time period we're going to go through here.
Thank you very much.
I would just make a couple of comments. We've worked, we've worked really hard on the city budget, I would say, over the last eight years. I've been on council for 10 years and I think we've, we've made a lot of progress. I think this is our eighth year of reducing the tax levy. But even more importantly in this year, I think, is our continued building of that emergency fund, the continued building of the facility fund. We have some huge facility needs, transit facility, probably a new police station, other things like that that are going to be, you know, tens of millions of dollars. And so to start building that fund so that we would have matching funds for hopefully some federal grants down the road. As Janice mentioned, our reserves are so important. And, and I think the other thing that I'm really pleased to see was our ability to add significant staff, significant permanent staff that, that deal with a lot of our core services for the city. We've been, our staff has been stretched as we, as our community continues to grow. And so it's, I think it's important that we get some assistance and relief for them. So I think we've got a good budget. We may have some challenges as we go forward with what we're facing right now, but I think we're in a good place to deal with that. So thanks to staff.
Would anyone from the public like to, to address?
Would anyone from the public like to, um, to address this topic? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion, a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved by Mims.
Seconded by Thomas.
Counsel discussion.
Well, I'd like, I'll just quickly echo what, what has been said thus far. I think it's um, you know, I think the budget is a good reflection of both, you know, conservative approach with our contingencies as well as making progress on a wide range of fronts, actually, in terms of our aid to agencies, improving our infrastructure, our park system. Uh, so the quality of life has been steadily improving over the years that I've been in Iowa City and I'm really pleased with that.
And I think that this year in particular, we will have no regrets about increasing aid to agencies.
Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 16, three-year financial plan and five-year capital improvement plan. Resolution approved of the three-year financial plan for the city of Iowa City, Iowa, and the five-year capital improvement plan. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved by Sally.
Seconded by Burgis.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Burgis. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgis.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 17, EPA consent order zinc affluent limits. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest the consent order between the city of Iowa City and the Environmental Protection Agency regarding zinc affluent limitations at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Moved by Thomas.
Seconded by Taylor.
Counsel discussion.
This is Pauline. I just had a quick question for Alamar. Uh, just as I was scrolling through it on uh, page four of their um, statement, the EPA statement. It's actually number 29 under the general allegations. I don't know if you can find that in there. To find it. Yes. It's a page 411. I'm down at the bottom, 29. It says, "A copy of the audit report was sent to the IDNR and the city on or around December 27, 2020."
Yes, good catch. I'll, I'll let the EPA know that.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Just a minor detail, that's all. Thanks.
I just had a question as to what the source of the zinc is.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Ron Kanaki, Public Works Director. Uh, we have, there's two sources really of zinc in our community. One is the background zinc, which is basically uh, if you take zinc as a, a vitamin, um, that's passed through and it ends up in the uh, insulin that comes into the plant. Our second source and, and probably about equivalent as far as size is from Procter &amp; Gamble, uh, in their hair care products. Um, and so, uh, you know, as, as, this, this has obviously been an issue for us for, for a few years. Um, and we've been trying to find the source and, and ultimately at the end, what we've come up with is uh, that when we set our local limits uh, back in 2015, uh, that the uh, efficiency that we had assumed in our, in our new plant. So if you recall 2015, we hadn't started the new plant, basically the south plant renovation was being completed, but we hadn't really had any experience in operating the, the new process. Uh, and, and what we found, as my lights are going off in my conference room, um, what we found is the through, through some help with EPA, uh, our assumed efficiency of 79%, which was an industry standard at that time, uh, is in reality 57% removal through our plant. And so basically we had created our own problem with some help from other experts, uh, in, in setting that local limit too high or too low or too high because uh, in, in the end we ended up um, hurting ourselves. And so basically uh, we've worked with EPA, uh, they've helped us through that process to identify basically where our, where our misstep was. Um, and we're in the process of working with P and G now to um, both the, the next resolution will, our ordinance will establish, start the process establishing the new local limit. But then also working with P and G to make sure that their pre-treatment processes can, can get us to the point where we need to be at, uh, at the plant.
Great. Thanks.
Any other counsel discussion?
Uh, Ron, do you, this is Pauline. Do you think then that um, with them decreasing their hair care products line over time? That, that will help to bring it down?
That's correct. Is it, and that's, that's one of the things that they've, they've already brought up with us is, is as they start to move uh, their, their product lines uh, to West Virginia. You know, it, it will reduce um, for them what that, you know, basically for them, what it does is it reduces the amount of pre-treatment that they'll have to do um, to the, their affluent that comes into our system.
Thank you.
Hearing none more comments. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes, sorry about that.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 18, wastewater code modification. Ordinance ending Title 16 and Title Public Works, Chapter 3, City Utilities, Article D, Wastewater Treatment Works Users, Section 6, Building Sewers and Connections, and Article E, Wa- Wastewater Treatment Works Indirect Discharge, Section 4, Pre-Treatment Standards, Section, I'm sorry, Subsection B 2, to establish updated and influence limitations for zinc. First consideration. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
Moved by Thomas.
Seconded by Weiner.
Counsel discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Ron Kanaki, Public Works Director again. Um, basically what this ordinance is doing is, is two things for us. One is um, that the first piece of that is in regards to building sewers and connections. Uh, our current practice has been that the, any building sewer line that's being abandoned is abandoned at the main. Uh, but that has not been codified. So this is basically just codifying what our current practice is. Uh, the second piece of this ordinance would then uh, reduce the zinc uh, local limits from 91.88 pounds per day uh, down to 44.1 pounds per day.
Any other counsel discussion? Roll call, please.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 19, 28E Agreement for Access Center. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest the 28 agreement between the city of Iowa City, Johnson County, the city of Corleville, and the city of North Liberty for the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, AKA The Guide Link Center. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Mims.
Hey, Taylor.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Counsel discussion.
I'll start if you don't mind, Mayor. Um, this is Susan Mims. I've been on the committee that's been working on this for the past, uh, well, I've been involved probably for about a year and a half or so. The committee's been going a lot longer than that. Um, I think as council members know, uh, the city has committed to $2.5 million towards the construction of the access center. Uh, Corleville and North Liberty have each committed about $500,000. Um, the county will be the managing entity or, well, it will be run by the county. They will hire a managing entity to actually provide the services uh, for members of the community who might be listening and may not be familiar. This is a behavioral access center. This is going to be a place where um, the community, uh, law enforcement can bring people who might otherwise um, need, need to go to the emergency room or in the case of law enforcement to jail. Uh, people who are having some sort of a crisis that might be due to mental health issues. Um, there will also be a sobering area. There will be detox. Um, and also people who are um, uh, substance, substance use issues as well. So there'll be a lot more issue, a lot more information coming out about the various services, how people can uh, bring a family member there. It will be for adults only, 18 and over. Um, one example would be, you know, a family who has an adult child or a spouse living with them um, who has a, an, an issue that they need assistance with. It doesn't necessarily need to be with the emergency room, doesn't need to be in jail, but they need special assistance because of some sort of behavioral issue. As I said, it might be mental health. Um, it might be substance, alcohol, et cetera. So we're excited about the progress with this. Uh, this 28E agreement is a contract uh, between the municipalities and the county as to um, how this will be run, the expectations in exchange for the money that the county, that the city is committing to this. Um, and there is also um, language in there that if for some reason the services were no longer provided within five years, that we would get 20% of our money back on a prorated basis. So really looking forward, this, this fits in with all of the um, uh, CIT training that we've done with all of our officers and first responders in the community. So really excited to see this get up and running hopefully later this year.
Great.
This is, this is Pauline. Uh, I, like many folks uh, in, in the area, uh, have visited the San Antonio facilities and uh, they're, they're really remarkable. And I've been anxious for a long time to see what we as a community uh, could do on those lines. Um, and I thank Susan for being a part of those discussions to get this project off the ground, uh, because doing something like this from scratch takes a lot of work. Uh, I'd also like to thank the cities of Corleville and North Liberty for being a part of this agreement. Uh, because it'll, it'll benefit their communities too. And I, I think it's a perfect example of our strategic plan, that goal number five that's enhance community engagement and intergovernmental relations because we're all working together on this and and it's going to be something that'll really benefit all of our communities. I'm, I'm excited. Every time I drive by where uh, they're starting the construction, it's, it's very exciting to see that.
Yeah, I'll just add, this is a wonderful project. It, it's wonderful in, in the sense that it is a joint uh, agreement involving uh, city of North Liberty, Corleville, and Iowa City. Susan, thanks for your work on this over the last year and a half. Um, it's a $7 million facility. It's a major, major piece of public work uh, that we're adding to our community. It also has an advisory board so that, you know, there's an opportunity there to kind of oversee the, the operation on a regular basis. And I believe the winter shelter is integrated in.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, I think, a wonderful example of cooperation and vision.
Um, I'm really happy to see it moving forward. I'm, uh, you just mentioned the, the emergency winter shelter, John. It's gonna be a tremendous uh, boon boon to the community to have it permanently in one, in place. That's a, that's a, that's really designed for it. And at times when it doesn't need to be used, it can be used for other purposes, but that will, that really is a step forward for, for this community. And I'm very happy that all the law enforcement issues have been sorted out. Just very happy to see this going forward.
I think another good element, this is Laura, uh, another good element um, relating to uh, this 28E agreement is the reporting that we'll have so that there will be data available um, for things like the, the number of visits and um, discharge. And we'll be able to quantify, I think, the successes and a lot of the good that's happening with the access center. So I was really pleased to see that as well.
Yeah, I, I think many people know that um, the access center, for the most part, different forms of it has been in the works for years and years and years. Um, the five elements have come together really nicely. I, I'm very happy to see that it is actually gonna happen because I know that um, it, it was definitely a hope and a dream and to know that all the work that's gone into it, um, getting to the point where it is, is, is uh, really great for our community. Um, when I think of all the needs in our community, especially from just the mental health uh, standpoint, this will be great. And so I'm very happy about this. Uh, I, I think we're ready for a roll call, please.
You might, you might have some folks that want to speak.
Oh, absolutely. I am so sorry. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to address this topic? And I do know that we have um, maybe uh, someone from the Jones County Attorney Office on potentially? Is there anyone that would like to address this topic? From the public? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 20, council appointments. Applicant, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless that, uh, specific qualifications are stated. Item 28, Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, April 7th, 2020 through April 1st, 2024. I get a mo-, uh, could I get a motion to, well, we need to actually discuss um, the applicants and I only saw one applicant, uh, that was, that, that fit the requirement because we have a one male requirement.
I, did we move now then, the, or just discussion?
Moved by.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss and then appoint.
Okay. Um, yes, it makes sense that there's just the one uh, male applicant and he's currently on there in one term and we've allowed people to do uh, two terms before. So that would make sense.
Well, any other comment that I would make is that of all of our commissions, this is one where um, some familiarity with state code and the whole civil service process in this case is really, really important. And Rick um, has is a former police officer for the city. So he's very uh, familiar with the civil service process because of all the testing that they have to do for police. And he served on this commission for a while. And what we have to understand too is when, we use this for hiring, but also when there are other issues that come up on the backend, this is an incredibly important commission. Having somebody with some expertise and, and familiarity is really important. So um, I would highly recommend that we reappoint Rick to this.
Agree.
All right.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I thought that was.
I, I moved to a, to a, to this position.
Sally.
Moved by Lee, seconded by Taylor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Key.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgis.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 21, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applicants must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 31st, 2020. Airport, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five- Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are moving on to item number twenty-two. And in a second, I'm going to invite Austin Wu, who I believe is maybe on the phone or maybe not. But because this is our first, Austin, you're there?
Yes, I am.
All right. There you go.
All right, so unfortunately, there's no campus event to speak of, unfortunately. I don't think there will be for a while. Let's see, I'd first like to wish goodbye to all students who lived in the residence halls, many of whom were first-year students over spring break. The process for evacuating most students out of the dorms took place. So I'm sorry that their first year in Iowa City has been cut short and I wish them a quick and safe return to their hometowns to the extent that circumstances allow. I would like to commend all university workers continuing their functions and critical roles, including those currently working at the UI hospitals and clinics. I'd also like to recognize faculty, staff, and students at the College of Public Health, many of whom have been working very hard in compiling lists of community resources for people to use as well as media and graphics, encouraging people to social distance and stay at home. See, for many students who are graduating this year, such as myself, the cancellation of commencement is disappointing. However, the sense of loss is immeasurably greater among my first-generation classmates, of which the university, I can count thousands of longest ranks and many of whom I call my friends. And then finally, I would also like to recognize the Iowa Supreme Court's halt on virtually all evictions until the fourth of May or later. This will undeniably keep people in their homes until the worst of the crisis subsides. And during a time when many people are out of work or otherwise have reduced abilities to pay rent, the link between health and housing has been well demonstrated. The risk of losing housing increases stress and anxiety that averts money from food and healthcare to rent and places additional burden on public services. Losing access to housing means additional pressure on already strained social services, not to mention exposure to the elements. In this environment, losing housing can mean increased exposure to disease, which is not ideal under any circumstance, but especially these. And as someone currently studying the subject, protecting people's housing is protecting public health. And I'm proud of our state for taking action to that end. So that's it. This will be a strange semester, at least for the remainder, but we'll find a way to make it work. Thanks.
I have a question for you, Aston.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, there is many students that they reach out to us and saying that they really have a difficulty continuing online classes. Was it because they live in common, they kickoff and they don't have nowhere to go? And also some students, they say they don't have access to internet. Basically, some students, they just don't learn by, guess, online. They need to delay. A lot of challenging. What the student government is doing to ensure those students will pass their classes.
So I, yeah, I think you pointed out a lot of the difficulties that people have that a lot of people might not learn as well in this detached online environment. I know I certainly don't. Yeah, a lot of students probably relied on university resources at the libraries and study spaces, internet. The computer labs, like the last remaining ones were closed off to students yesterday. So like, I don't have a printer anymore. So there's all those, yeah, so not all students will have internet. Maybe if they're in their hometowns, they won't have as good internet connectivity as at the university. I know at Iowa State, most undergraduate classes have been converted to a pass-fail system. So they won't affect people's GPA or the standards for passing have been modified. I know there's a petition going around for the same effort to take place at the University of Iowa. I can certainly ask Noel and Sarah, the president, vice presidents about their take on the pass, non-pass status or any other assistance that students might need.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Good. And Austin, this is Janice. I commend also the DI for continuing to publish throughout this semester, even though they have to do their editorial board meetings virtually. I think that will also be continued to be a really helpful resource for students.
Yeah, it really is spectacular. So I actually went to the hospital to donate blood today and I walked instead of taking the bus like I usually would. What I saw in the newsstand, they're still printing the DI. And I reckon in fifteen, twenty years, those copies will be local historic artifacts. I guess hats off to them.
Thank you, Austin. Counselors, there may be some people from the public that did not address us earlier during public comment are wondering if people are agreeable to allow a public comment at this time.
Sure.
Yes, sure.
Great. All right, so we're going to open a public comment. If there's anyone on the line or on the telephone that would like to comment, because I'm not exactly sure if people are still here. I may just have people chime in, give their first name, first and last name, and give public comment. And keep in your comments no more than three to five minutes. Hearing no one, I'm going to go to.
What was the topic?
Oh, go right ahead.
What was the topic?
Oh, it's just public comment. Anyone that would like to address any topic with counsel? That was not on the formal agenda.
Well, this is Dan Shaw. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been sending you some information and research and emails today about the coronavirus and some insights that people in the community have been seeing about the way it was or was not contained at the initial outbreak when it first got to Johnson County on March third. Really just wanted to impress some of the epidemiological modeling that shows the rate of infection spread based on known cases of community spread and some specific oversights in the containment protocol that did not appear to capture all of the infectious transmission that happens with coronavirus. I really think Iowa Department of Public Health here and our local Johnson County Department of Public Health are radically underestimating the contagiousness and the transmission mechanisms of coronavirus. That's not based on my opinion. That's based on epidemiological researchers connected all over the world who are studying this in real time and sharing their findings. And I've been trying to share those findings since March eleventh with the Johnson County Public Health Department, with Johnson County Emergency Management, local officials. I've been trying to get this information in the hands of people to make that decision. And we're getting very little feedback or dialogue, I guess, about why they are so out of step with the world expert expert community's opinions, or I should say their evidence that's emerging about how the virus is spread, lasting up to three days on plastic, two days on steel. You know, we're talking about doorknobs and hand railings. We're talking about other studies that show it lasting up to nine days on hard surfaces. Talking about significant evidence of transmission effects that are not accounted for by our containment protocol or investigations of the initial trace contacts as they first came into the community. And that's really what's presenting the danger here. If this is the kind of spread that's been observed in other places and was not contained initially, the scale of what we're talking about is enormous. We're talking thousands of cases already present. So that's really what's driving the frustration in the community is seeing this expert opinion from around the world all coalescing around the danger that we're in because we have known community-acquired transmission. The D J who announced it publicly, his estimated infection date was as far back as March eighth when his symptoms spiked on March thirteenth. So what we're looking at is a long period of time where we've got this virus that doubles its growth rate every three days or more, according to recent data, and no real understanding or acknowledgement of that from any of our government agencies. So I'm happy to share any information I know or answer any questions that are creating stumbling blocks. I understand there's differences of opinion about the best way forward from our local stakeholders, including the hospitals. But I just want to express a very strong community position that it is growing around us, that we're not doing anything about it.
Dan, thank you for sharing. Counsel typically can't talk during public comment or have discussion, but we appreciate you sharing. Is there anyone else on the phone that would like to address counsel? Or on Zoom? Hearing none, I'm going to go to item number twenty-three, which is city council information. And I know that things have been a little light, but maybe if any counselors have something, you can just chime in. Otherwise, we don't have to go to everyone.
This is Pauline. I just had, this is kind of a question for Jeff. I had on my calendar a couple of upcoming things that I suppose probably we rescheduled, including tomorrow. I think there was supposed to be a demonstration of an electric bus. I would imagine that's been put off.
Yeah.
Okay. Probably rescheduled hopefully in the near future because I'm excited to be able to see that at some point. And the other thing was that I think on April second afternoon, we were invited to the grand opening for the Element Hotel, which I was also excited to see that, but I imagine that's being postponed also.
I don't have confirmation on that, but it's a pretty safe bet.
Right, okay, that's all I had.
This is Susan here. I would just say, remind everybody, and I don't know how many people are on here other than counsel and staff now, but to keep looking out and reaching out to people that you know in the community that are staying at home, whether retirees or working at home or elderly or whoever. Just, I'll tell you, I've been working from home for the last week and a half and it is really different. When you're used to being out and around other people all the time, it's a real change. And so for people who, you know, who are home and are doing the best they can to self-isolate, you know, just, I think, Bruce, maybe you've used the words and I've had other people use them, you know, be kind, reach out, check on people and do the best you can to keep yourself safe and healthy and do all the social distancing that you possibly can. And just a real thank you to staff and the mayor for all the work that they've been doing behind the scenes. And this is.
Go ahead. I thought Janice was going to chime in. This is Laura. I just wanted to echo some of the discussion that we had during our work session in case folks didn't tune in at five o'clock for that. We had the opportunity to get a really comprehensive and helpful update regarding the city's response to the coronavirus pandemic. And I also just want to highlight for people, because things are moving so quickly, that we want to make sure folks are staying home if they are able. And the mayors of Iowa City, Corleville, and North Liberty came together on Sunday and pronounced that advisory to people to ensure that they are staying home. And so I think that's pretty clear and explicit guidance and want to make sure that people understand that that is serious. We don't take steps like closing public buildings and making statements about advisories to work remotely and not leave your house unless you absolutely need to for essential items. So I think that, I hope people are able to find good, reliable sources of information. I would continue to direct them to the City of Iowa City and to Johnson County Public Health and to the Iowa Department of Public Health and the C D C. You know, regardless of the data we may have at our fingertips at any given moment, we do know that if we act as if we need to contain the spread of the virus and we stay home if we can, that that will definitely help. So I just wanted to thank city staff and all of the people in our community who are able to do that and contribute to that effort so that we can help protect our most vulnerable as well as everyone in the community.
This is Janice. I echo what Lauren and Susan said with some special thoughts to, if you know folks who are in nursing homes in particular, they're really isolated right now because they can't have visitors in. While we were meeting, Iowa had its first COVID-19-related death. My heart goes out to them. It won't be the last, unfortunately. It's why we're all asking people to practice social distancing and to stay home if it's at all possible. It's a little bit jarring this evening to be doing normal business. We still need to be trying to do some normal things as we can. But really do ask everybody to look out for people as they can and echo the notion to please, please be kind and where you can be, please, as Mr. Rogers would say, please be a helper.
Thank you, counselors, for chiming in on there. And my last comment on that in relation to COVID-19 is that our actions do affect other people. And so just be aware that we're in this together and we can get through this together. And so I'll leave it at that. I'm going to switch over to item number twenty-three. Wait a minute, item number twenty-four, and we'll get any updates from our city manager?
Nothing.
City attorney? Our city clerk, Kelly? All right, we're at that precious number twenty-five. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second by Mims.
Move by Salih, seconded by Mims. We're going to do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.